All right. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, pursuant to public laws 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times, posted on the first-floor bulletin board in City Hall, and filed in the city clerk's office. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Present.
Vice President Figueroa Kettnerberg.
Present.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
For the record, Councilwoman Gonzalez didn't call to inform that she would...
She's here.
For the record, Councilwoman Gonzalez is here. Councilman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams.
Present. He presented.
Council President Feliciano.
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Legislative Council, Mr. Edward Cologie. And in for West Bridges is Mr. Rashad Williams. And he's present. On your call, Madam President.
Thank you. Please continue with the invocation.
Certainly. Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
Your room, Council President.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Garcia, Councilwoman Williams would like us to observe a moment of silence. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you very much, Council President. The reason I'm asking for this this evening is over this past weekend, it was announced in international media and published locally in the Trentonian that the remains of a plane were finally found off the coast of Currie, a small island near Tallinn, the capital of Estonia, after 84 years. This is important to Trenton because Henry Antyle Jr., the 27-year-old younger brother of acclaimed composer George Antyle, was the United States Department diplomat, who was one of nine people aboard the Finnish passenger airliner named the Kaliva that was found, which was shot down over the Baltic Sea by Soviet-Russian bombers on June 14, 1940. The plane was en route from the Estonian capital Tallinn to Helsinki, Finland, when it was down just days before Moscow annexed the Baltic States during the beginning of World War II. All nine people, unfortunately, aboard the Finnish aircraft died. Henry Antyle's death in the service of the United States State Department and our country made him one of the first United States casualties in World War II. On behalf of Trenton City Council, I would like to ask for a moment of silence in respect to our fellow Trentonian, Henry Antyle Jr., and the other innocent lives lost that day.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, Council President. If there's nothing further, at this time, we have a presentation. We have Creative Change Counseling Incorporated, presented by yourself, Council President Feliciano.
Thank you.
And to the presenters, I believe you have a total of, council president's, 10 or 15 minutes?
10 minutes.
You have a total of 10 minutes. We will start a clock for the 10-minute purpose and we will also have your presentation up momentarily.
Thank you. And Jorge, when you're finished with that, if we could have the monitor turned so that the council can see as well. Thank you.
You're gonna want to flip. Yeah, there you go. Counselors, the presentation visible to all of you? Thank you.
Yeah, gotta hold it. Good afternoon, council members. Good afternoon, public. We are Creative Change Counseling, and our mission and our vision, mission is to inspire hope and change lives one family at a time. Our vision is to lead the charge by providing quality mental and behavioral health within our local communities and abroad, ultimately becoming a legacy in the service of humanity. Our agency overview, Creative Change Counseling, Inc., is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization based in Lumberton Township, New Jersey since 2014. We've been serving individuals with mild to severe emotional, mental, and behavioral health challenges. We are community-driven, centered, and responsive, evidence-based practices and clinical interventions. We have individualized services tailored to meet the specific needs using a continuum of care model based on risks, needs, and responsibility. Our aim is to eliminate, reduce, and/or mitigate risk factors by utilizing natural and unnatural support to increase or where needed, create protective factors that will enhance our quality of life. Our organizational structure is intensive in community, which is in-home therapy. We do this in New Jersey statewide as well as Delaware. We have behavior support services, behavioral modification management, Respite, New Jersey statewide and Delaware. Mental health outpatient counseling, medication, medication. We have four locations in Burlington, Mercer, Monmouth Counties, as well as North Carolina. And we deal with substance abuse outpatients. We have three locations in Burlington County, Mercer County, Ocean County, and we provide peer recovery centers in those counties as well. We also have therapeutic recreation, teen social development, and a learning center, which is in Burlington County, Mercer County. Sensory Development Center, which is in Burlington County, Respite, and a summer daycare. What we are looking to do in the city of Trenton is bring a restoration hub. That building is located at 16 West Front Street. That... Again. So... So the building is... The way that the building will be set up, we have two suites. We will occupy the entire third floor. The building to everybody's bottom portion of the building would be Suite 301. That is where all the programming and all the collaborative offices will be held. The building or the space to the top or the drawing is where we will have all our wellness. We will have a mental health... Well, the mental health, we have the multipurpose space, fitness room, an art therapy room, a game room, and a movie theater. I will... But now have one of the other members here go over the inception and why we're here and what we're planning on doing. You don't... Oh, good.
So the hub came into existence, I guess, the way it was birthed. There it is established in the Juvenile Justice Commission, created by Section 2 of PL 1995(c)(284), a two-year pilot program titled "The Restorative and Transformative Justice for Youth and Communities Pilot Program." The purpose of the pilot program is to develop innovative, restorative, and transformative justice continuums of care in four target cities that include two components: restorative justice hubs and community-based enhanced reentry wraparound services. The pilot program shall be established in the multiple... Multiple cities of Camden, Newark, Patterson, and Trenton. So we have our mission statement pertaining to the hub: "To make a positive impact on the lives of youth and families, position as a beacon of hope by restoring the community through preventing young people from entering the justice system and reducing recidivism." Our vision: centralized collaborative entity that will encapsulate a one-stop service provision, coordination, and support center for JJC-involved youth. Modify therapeutic community, promote healthy growth and development, help youth to develop greater levels of self-confidence, self-worth, resilience, and a sense of social responsibility. Reentry wraparound model geared towards the prevention, intervention, and stabilization of at-risk youth. Continuing with our vision: coordination of care, service accessibility, youth and family engagement, and transportation to support youth involvement. Family, Community, and Spiritual Development Center. Victim Awareness and Impact and Peace Circles will be utilized as a platform to close the gap between law enforcement and the community. A safe space for youth to fulfill their psychological, emotional, behavioral, academic, social, and recreation voids.
Thank you. So the services that we will provide at the hub will be assessments and evaluations, case management and wraparound services, an alternative academic support service, victim awareness workshops and peace circles, life skills and social development, conflict resolution groups, violence and gun provision workshops, gang prevention and intervention services, spiritual development workshops, family support services, housing and emergency support services, support groups, career and vocational support, psychoeducation groups and workshops, health and wellness services, and recreational services. We are going to partner with all of the agencies in Trenton. That is the goal. Faith-based organizations such as Salvation Social Justice, Transformation Church, employment services such as Mercer County College, Isles One-Stop CCC, mental health services such as CCC, Catholic Charities, housing support agencies like Catholic Charities, Children's Futures, Homefront, Mercer Board of Social Services, substance use disorder treatment and recovery centers from CCC, life skill support services from CCC and Beauty to the Block, mentorship from Justice for Juniors, the Father's Center of New Jersey, financial literacy and debt support services from TD Bank, CCC, and Isles. Education support will come from Mercer County College, Isles, Trenton Board of Education, Daylight, Twilight, and preventative mentoring services, EMI Just Hope, Beauty to the Block, Men for Hope and Help So.
So the benchmarks that we are going to focus on on: no police involvement within nine months of discharge, reduction in recidivism, increased collaborative efforts to comply with reentry and prevention planning, securing gainful employment, increased compliance with alternative sanction programs, increase in overall school enrollment and attendance, decrease affiliation with unhealthy peer social groups, reduction in gang involvement, and then increase in family stabilization.
And the outcomes that we plan to see is positive youth development. And under that, we'll see an improved academic achievement. We'll see reduction in chronic absenteeism. We'll also focus on financial literacy, improved understanding of credit, enhanced understanding of money management. We'll see a decrease in homelessness, a reduction in eviction and displacement.
In reference to our job readiness, we want to increase employment rate amongst young youth and families, increase job preparedness, reduction of harmful behaviors. We want to see youth will develop and enhance conflict resolution skills. Youth will become more aware of the harmful effects of substance use and abuse. And in reference to community engagement, we want to see an increase, positive community interaction, increase a sense of community accountability.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Listen, thank you for coming tonight. Before I open it up to my council colleagues, just to make a couple of things clear, right, for those on the dais, I mean, those in the audience. You've already secured the location? Have you already secured the location?
Yes.
Okay. And so the funding that is going to be utilized to run your program, where does that come from?
It actually comes from a grant that we applied for, and the grant was received from JJC. So it's federal dollars funneled through JJC as also funnelled through the county as well.
Thank you. So you're receiving state funding through JJC and the county as well to bring us a hub to downtown Trenton in the building where Children's Futures is located. Is that correct, on the third floor? So to my colleagues, I have seen what they have done on Quaker Bridge Road with the hub center out there. The... It's not like a big mega Regal One movie theater, but it is a very nice movie theater that they have for the children. The areas where they have for their workshops and everything is a very nice setup. I encourage you to go out there and check them out on Quaker Bridge Road to see. But I do know that there at one time was talk about different aspects of revitalizing our downtown Trenton, the entertainment area and everything. And so with something like this, I'm glad and grateful that you're coming to the city of Trenton to help make this a place of building and rebuilding and helping and revitalizing our community. And this time, I'll open it up. Do any of my colleagues have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. So regarding, actually, the space with Children's Futures, can you be explicit what will happen with that space and will the organization be staying?
Will Children's Futures be staying?
Yes, sir.
Children's Futures, if I'm not mistaken, is...
Could you speak more in my... Thank you.
I'm sorry. Children's Futures, I believe, is either on the first or second floor. We will be occupying the third floor.
That's what I thought you said. I just wanted to make sure, because they do a lot of work in the community, as you know. So just want to make sure before people...
Actually, everybody in the building will be some of the people that we will be collaborating with as well.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Any other colleagues with any questions? All right. Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, Council President. Madam President, at this time, we've reached a point of public comment. If we could have the public comment clipboard, please. And to the public, public comment will be... Hold on, based on this. Five minutes, five minutes long for each individual. You may address anything that you wish. Please do understand that the council is not obligated to respond. The first individual we have for public comment is Waldemar Ronquillo.
Hi.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Waldemar Ronquillo, community activist, 222 Hotson Row, Robbinsville, New Jersey. Good evening. The reason I'm here tonight, because you can see my community is right behind me. All these kids. Those kids been playing soccer for many years, and we don't have no soccer fields. They promised to us two years ago. No bathrooms, no water. And tonight, the parents got enough. We need to know when they're going to build the soccer fields they promised to us. We want to know. Because the community asked me many times, you commit with the mayor, you commit with the... With Joe Harris, one time, he promised to us that he want to build. It's nothing done yet. I want to say in Spanish, because they can understand what I'm saying. And also because I feel you guys be treating our community as a stepchild of the city, not kids of the city. It's not correct. Muy buenas noches a todos los que están aquí. Lo que estoy pidiendo a ellos es que hace tres años me prometieron unos, una cancha de fútbol y no lo han hecho. Nos tratan a nuestra comunidad como si fuéramos hijas de la ciudad, no hijos de la ciudad. Hace tres años el alcalde, cuando estaba en campaña, junto con Joe Harrison, prometieron que iban a hacer las canchas nuevas y no han hecho nada. Tenían un millón y medio de dólares y no han hecho nada. So queremos saber para cuándo lo van a hacer. ¿Verdad? ¿Están ustedes de acuerdo? So we asking you when this can be done? Because they said they're going to say sometime next year. No, we want to now. We don't want to wait one more year. Imagine all these kids, they go play every weekend. Sometimes they have to go knocking neighbors' home for use the bathroom. We have little girls play soccer. You know, and also, you know, that's not right. You had this young kids. They want to be out of the street. They want to play soccer and be involved with the community. They seem not helping out. I walk around the city and all the fields, they got like new bathrooms. They got new basketball fields, they got baseball fields. But what about our community? Why is not be done nothing for our community? Yo te siento también a ellos que he corrido la ciudad de Trenton, diferentes áreas de Trenton tienen canchas nuevas. Porque a nosotros no dan la misma oportunidad que a los demás. ¿Por qué? ¿Que somos hijas de la ciudad o hijos de la ciudad? Muchísimas gracias.
Just an announcement to the public. While we do understand that we have many native Spanish speakers here at this time, we do, we... Just so you understand, Mr. Ronquillo, you did do the right thing. You translated from Spanish to English, exactly. So that's what we need. And just so anybody knows, if there is any foreign language that anybody wishes to address in public comment, you will be required to, hey, they're translating to English for it to be put onto the record. Thank you. Our next individual is Laura Mora.
Presente. Mi nombre es Laura Mora. Vivo en 528 Gladstone Avenue. Soy organizadora de la comunidad. Soy consejera de la comunidad. Soy una persona que ve las injusticias en esta comunidad como muchos de nosotros. My name is Laura Mora. And I live in 528 Gladstone Avenue. And today, I'm going to tell you or ask you all the concerns. ¿Les gustó la demostración de civismo de los niños de Chambersburg? Did you like... Did you like that demonstration of civility by the children of Chambersburg with the salute of the plaque? All the children deserve better recreation. No better west, no better north, no better south, no better east, equal. Today, I'm going to speak more in English than Spanish because I feel in my heart it's broke. It's broke because I went on Sunday to Calaway Park at 10 o'clock. I say until 1 o'clock. How many people do you think it was over there? None, only me, LA Parker, and another woman walking with a dog. What happened? Five security cars there. Two law enforcement cars there. And what the Unity Park has? A camera. And when you call the police, never appears. Unity Park is between three streets, Hamilton, Division, and Chestnut. King Street is closed, where are shootings, are robberies, so many drug dealers, and now are people overdose. What example is for our children's? And only these children's, we have more than 5,000 children between 0 age to 17. And what we did got? If you compare Unity Park with Calaway Park, where is Sparkle? Calaway Park is Sparkle. Is Trenton, what is Trenton having for us, for our children's? You think these childrens deserve nothing because they speak Spanish? They're different color? No. We need to put our brain to think. Recreation, save our children's. Recreation, art, education. It's no crime in our city. 10 years ago, I spoke the same thing. No, 12. And what they did? Put all the ideas under the arm and left. And today, what do we have? More crime. Why? Because 12 years ago, nobody cares to save our children's. Today, we have more crime. And continue hurts to see other... Mother Luther King playground. You think the childrens use that playground? If you go compare, go in 4 o'clock to over there and go to Unity Park, you should see Unity Park. And I can show you on my phone, I have recorded videos where vandalism is there, accusing our children's. These men, Jose, has been waiting eight years for something different. And only Jose, many parents dreaming. You see the education of our childrens that practice sports? Their silence. You go to some schools and you see these children singing our anthem. Singing, singing the black anthem. Like it's their anthem. My heart is really hurt because no one, no one in this city is helping our Chambersburg children's. It's not only Unity Park, it's another park, Franklin Park. We don't have enough for our young children's. We ask for two football soccer fields, but there volleyball, basketball, or other sports our children's can do. We have Trenton High School with... Listen to me.
Yarissa Roldan.
Please state your name and address for the record, ma'am. There you go.
Now, okay. So my name is Yarissa Roldan. The address is 609 Pine Street, Trenton, New Jersey, 08638. So I'm here because I would like to know about the status of the proposal 2440, since it is necessary to all the documents to be... Not working. Okay. To all the documents to be translating in Spanish, since this is what I've been fighting with the board education. And as you know, because you speak two languages, the people that speak two languages are more... You know, how grateful it is to have the ability of understanding everyone. I'm pretty sure that all of the parents, or most of the parents, I'm going to say most of the parents here, they do not understand English. So I think for any reason that they're here, that they had to immigrate here, we have to have that in Spanish. All the cities have it. So why we can't do it? This is the city of New Jersey. So it's just something that it needs to be done. And I'm going to say something, and it's not to be harsh on nobody, none of you councils, but when you... When you... To the... For the position, you ask for the Spanish vote. And you get it. That's why you... Not, not that's the only reason you're there, but Spanish help. So when you get the position, we don't see much. We seeing all the parks. And we've been... I took my son and my daughter for three, I think, three, four years to Calaway Park. And it's lately, it's been great. Security, the grass is great. My kids play tennis, great tennis courts. So the bathrooms are available. So why not do it in the Unity Park? So why not do it in the Unity Park? So, okay, okay. So it is, I mean, the children needed not only to play and don't get hurt, but it's for health reasons, for their lungs, their lungs. They've been playing like that a lot. And I don't think you would like your child to be playing like that. These kids have a talent, so why not to support them? As Michelle Obama said, no child should be left behind. So... This is just too much for me. Because this is not the only... The only problem in this community, in this city. What about the bullying? What about the fights in Trenton Central High School that I know they're still going on? It's just that kids are not allowed to post it on social media. So not too long ago, a couple of weeks ago, somebody stopped someone in the school. I don't know the details, but what I do know is that you as a council, you should help in that to resolve that issue. And it's not just blocks against Hispanics, Hispanics against Hispanics, blocks against blocks. What about the medical issues after the fight, after somebody hit somebody on the head? The trauma. What about the kids that have to have a record? Who's going to help them? Probably they didn't, they were not raised in a nice, safe environment, but they don't deserve that. They deserve assistance that can help them not be in the back of an issue. So can we, I'm sorry, I'm talking about we as a community, but you, can you do something? I know New Jersey has rules, they have laws, but the school system is not following them. And the kids need your help. I take care of my children, but who's going to take care of the children that...
José Cabrera. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es José Cabrera. Mi dirección es 1945 de La Sobra Street. Por favor.
Yes.
Dime tu dirección.
1945.
His name is José Cabrera and his address is 1945 South Broad Street in Trenton.
Bueno, quiero agradecer a las personas que hablaron anteriormente, líderes que son la voz del pueblo, y en esta oportunidad yo quiero ser la voz de los niños.
He wants to thank the people who has been here. They are the voice of the community, but he wants to be the voice of the children.
Quiero iniciar dando de gracias a Dios por la oportunidad. Hace ocho años iniciamos con esto, con el Team América. Fue un sueño de jugar fútbol con amigos. Y en forma de motivación, recuerdo que hoy le decía a los niños que debemos ser el equipo de Trenton. Y hoy estamos cumpliendo el sueño, estamos en la ciudad, y creo que ya estamos representando a la niñez de Trenton.
He started eight years ago with a group of friends and he formed the Trenton Soccer League. And he explained to the children that that was a dream then, but he is here today to say that this is a reality.
Para dar una introducción más sobre lo que es el equipo, no solamente somos un equipo de fútbol. Hemos llegado a tener una relación familiar, una relación entre 431 familias, y estamos dándole la oportunidad a los niños de tener una infancia poco parecida a la que hemos tenido nosotros, pero para que la disfruten.
They are not only a soccer team, but they have a family relations, relationship with the 431 families that have kids in their leagues. And they want to, for the children to have probably more opportunities than the ones that he had.
Hace años atrás, recibí la visita del concejal Harrison, quien me ofreció su ayuda, prometió ayudarnos durante todo este tiempo, y hoy nuevamente estamos aquí a un paso de cumplir un sueño, un paso de que esas promesas se puedan cumplir, que los niños tengan un mejor lugar donde jugar, que los niños tengan un lugar sano, un parque de diversiones. Y quiero agradecerles a todos ustedes por tomarnos en cuenta.
He said that several years ago, Council Harrison came to visit him and he promised to help the league. And he is here today to appreciate that they are just steps away from realizing their dream. And he is thanking all of you for that.
Así que para finalizar, solo quiero decirle a todos los niños que el mensaje de hoy es decir gracias, trabajen, esfuérdense, tengan dedicación. Hoy dependemos de Dios. Si Dios lo quiere, el proyecto se va a dar de ustedes, está en sus manos. Y solamente decirle a los niños que estamos haciendo lo mejor por ustedes, a los padres. Gracias por la confianza y esperamos un mejor futuro para nuestros niños.
He said a lot, but he wants to tell the children that to continue to work, to put their greatest effort and that we are here to do that. He thanks all of you again for making his dream to come closer to. And I don't know, si me puedes decir lo último para poderlo traducir bien? I'm sorry. Tu dijiste que la decisión está en manos de ellos.
La decisión está en manos de Dios y el día de ustedes.
He said that the decision is in God's hands and in your hands.
Muchas gracias.
Is that Tulio, Beliz, or is that Vela or Beliz? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening, council. Yeah, I am a Trenton resident, yeah, for many years. And yeah, I think everybody is here for the same reason, you know, you're the kids.
I just need your name and address for the record, sir. I need your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Tulio, and my address 1006 Greenwood Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Yeah. We see everybody is here for the reason, the one, the bigger reason. The reason we came here today is, you know, we need your help. You see, that kids, that kids is grow up fast, you know? Now, we need the project for the park. I don't know, I see our authorities abandoned us. I don't know what happened. I think all the commerce in Trent is in the Chambersburg. You see a lot of stores, a lot of groceries. I mean, I think we pay taxes with all the guys here in Trent. I think, no, west, no, the east, everybody pay taxes here, everybody had the commerce, had the business. I think we need your help sooner, we need your help now, please. Because you see the kids, they grow up fast. I mean, I don't know when the guys take the action for do something for our community. Yeah, everybody is here, we meeting here for, well, the big, big, big reason. Yeah, thank you for this.
Ken Wolski.
My name is Ken Wolski. I live at 219 Woodside Avenue in West Ward. I'm here to comment on the proposed ordinance 24042, which makes it unlawful to smoke or vape cannabis in public and institutes a series of fines from $250 to $1,000 for this offense, except for the case of medical cannabis patients. I'm grateful for the amendment to this ordinance that seeks to protect the medical cannabis patient who is allowed to smoke cannabis wherever cigarettes are smoked. The amendment allows a police officer to ask a person who is using cannabis publicly to produce his Cannabis Regulatory Commission ID card in order to avoid a fine. The medical marijuana program started in 2012. In that time, the medical cannabis population was up to 130,000 patients in the state of New Jersey. However, when cannabis was legalized in 2021, there were, we're now down to 80,000 patients in the medical cannabis program. So about 100 until about 50,000 medical cannabis patients in New Jersey no longer have an ID card to show to a police officer that they are legitimate patients. Most patients dropped out of the cannabis program because physicians were charging an exorbitant amount of money to stay in the program. And now patients may obtain the same medicine from an alternative, from one of the dispensaries that they do from one of the state's alternative treatment centers. In addition, many patients use cannabis medically without ever having been diagnosed with a medical or mental health problem. They just found that cannabis improves their life. Now, Trenton has a poverty rate of 28%. So many residents may be restricted from using their medical cannabis indoor because they live in subsidized housing, or because the landlord refuses to allow them access, or because they may be homeless. If they can't use their medicine indoors and now they can't use it outdoors, what are they to do? The poverty rate also guarantees that impoverished, mostly minority residents are going to be targeted by this ordinance. And if they are unable to pay the fines for public use of cannabis, then suddenly they will be involved in the criminal justice system. And this is exactly the scenario that most residents in New Jersey wanted to avoid when they voted to legalize the medical adult use of cannabis. And finally, in my 48 years as a registered nurse here in New Jersey, including time as a public health nurse in the city of Trenton, I realized that evidence is quite clear that secondhand tobacco smoke is far greater health concern than secondhand cannabis smoke. So thank you for your attention.
Captain Joseph Deegan. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Joseph Deegan, 121 Perry Street, Trenton, New Jersey. Good evening, members of council. I'm here to address a redevelopment project that I have submitted an application for to assist with the blightness within the community of the East Trenton area. I wasn't aware of the concern of all the members that would be here today, but I do want to point out one fact, which is our goal overall, is to create housing that would be within the medium and moderate income, and that would help us to retain a lot of our civil servants. I, as a firefighter, used to live in Ewan permanently until there was proper housing that I saw fit. The project in which I live in, I personally have a 40% stake within that project originally when it was built. There was a lot of controversy with council, and mainly because they were outside investors, working with outside contractors, and not specifically set in a way that I feel would be upholding our fiduciary responsibility to the community as a whole and allowing us to actually have some equity stake as civil servants here in the community. My goal is to assist with rehab in the Hart Avenue area and the Poplar Avenue area, which has a very large blight and vacant properties. Some of those properties, as a firefighter working at Engine Six, I have repeated multiple fires at the same location, and I see no reason why not allowing the civil servants who have the financial means to be able to actually repair the buildings and would have an actual equity stake. And because we already are the ones who respond to the matter, I think as firefighters, police officers, nurses, teachers, those who are in the area, and because I work specifically in emergency services, it's in my best interest to ensure that the homes are safe and they're not ran by slum lords. So it's not only myself as a firefighter, but many others that are inside of my group. We've have come together and we raised a capital fund of $260,000 that would go directly to repairing two particular homes that's in that area. One, it helps for us to be held accountable to your one-year repair timeframe. I think we'll be able to do so within a three-month to six-month timeframe. But if we can assist in the process of revitalizing the community, another portion that I just want to add to that, we're using architects that are from the city, lawyers that are from the city, and we're also partnered with the One Haven Inc., which has been, which has been working on the Chamber Street project. All of those members who are actual contractors are members that were once convicted and now are in our community. But because of the fact that the One Haven Inc. has created a, for lack of a better word, a return home system, which allow members who have been incarcerated to not only have a place to live, but they have a place to receive their mail. Many members who come back from prison unfortunately tend to have very poor living conditions, which causes them to not be able to see their children, not be able to receive mail, and because of that, they sometimes fall back into the system. So we're doing everything in-house that we possibly can to stimulate the Trenton economy. If it was, if we had a proper hardware store, we would even buy all our hardware in Trenton. So I just want to somehow ask as to how we can, not necessarily expedite, but how the system of redevelopment applications are responded to, especially for those who have done the due diligence to provide proof of the proper funding to finish the project. Well, it's sort of a question in a sense, but I'm just stating my case because I'm one of many, and I would like to be able to somehow speak with someone who's working with the economical development or housing economic development that would be able to create some form of a streamlined process for those who already have a interest and have funding, specifically those who are actually rooted here in the city. That's my case. Thank you.
Rima Padilla.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Rima Padilla and the address is 225 East Stage Street. I'm one of the owner at Medlife Pharmacy. And I'm here because we are facing one of the challenge because, you know, as a pharmacy, when the customers, it's mostly the disabled patients and the older patients, they come to pick up their medications. But since the street does not have any parking, then they just park their car for about less than a five minutes to pick up their medication, but they end up getting ticketed. So this is the reason we are losing patients and our delivery drivers who just parked their car for, as I said, five minutes to pick up the deliveries and leave, and they end up getting ticketed. Like they make about $200 a week in their wages, but they end up taking tickets four days out of five. So everything they earn goes out into the tickets. So we are losing employees too, and that is the biggest challenge. So as a, you know, like nowadays, because you know with this problem, most of the businesses are closing down, and we are here to, you know, survive. And this is one of the issue that this is becoming very serious every day. So I'm just here to see if something could be done, like if a temporary parking, like a 15-minute, that is also a big help, something that could... that is also a big help, something that could help us. Thank you.
Okay, Madam President, at this time, we are finished with public comment. You may start with any council member you wish for civic comment.
Thank you. Tonight, we'll start with Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. It's so exciting to see you all here today. Thank you for coming, especially for bringing the kids. I think it's very important for them to see how our government works and how to advocate for yourself, for what you want and what you need in your community. And with that being said, I will gladly support Resolution 24-256 that we have on our agenda tonight. That's, that approves the purchase of the equipment and installation of the equipment for the soccer fields in Unity Square Park. Unity Square Park is very important to me as I was a part of the small team of people that demanded that name be changed from Columbus Park because of its racial history. And to rename it Unity Square Park was a decision between a small team of us that actually Councilwoman Feliciano was there and Councilman Joe Harrison helped us and led the charge on that. And we have a couple of gentlemen in the back that was in the room as well. So I'm very proud for that park to become what it is now. And I will gladly support that resolution as it's important for our kids to have things to do in our community because it keeps them out of trouble and it puts them on a good path to have a great future. Moving on, I have to express my grievances with ordinance 24-042. I agree with Mr. Ken Wolfski and his sentiments regarding cannabis public smoking because this ordinance only protects medical cannabis users, but it does not protect recreational adult use. Being that adult use and medical use is legal in the state of New Jersey, neither one of them should be prohibited. And in fact, wherever tobacco is permissible, cannabis should be permissible. Otherwise, we would be perpetuating the racial and discriminatory issues that we have faced before and reincarcerating Black and Brown people in our communities. And I cannot support this ordinance as it's written. So I hope that we could go back to the drawing board on this and find fairness in this ordinance. And lastly, I want to touch on the commercial vehicles. It's been a huge issue in the city. And we're getting a lot of calls, a lot of emails, a lot of messages about commercial vehicles being parked in residential zones after a certain time and overnight in our city. As we know, Trenton is a densely populated community and with multiple adults living in a single household, it causes a lot of vehicular traffic in our city. And to park commercial vehicles in a residential zone where residents need to park overnight is not okay. And with that being said, I would like to recommend to the administration that we put up signs around the city on the poles that prohibits commercial vehicles to park in those areas between those times according to our ordinance. And I think that would be a good deterrent as well. So I, I don't really see a lot of those signs. But, and also, I would like to recommend that we install signs that says, "No parking from here to the corner" because large vehicles like the ambulances, like the fire trucks, and these larger trucks cannot turn down certain streets because people are parking all the way to the corner when they should not be. So I would like to recommend us putting up signs and then also following up with parking enforcement between those times to make sure people are following the rules. So with that being said, thank you again. It was great to hear from you all. And I'm looking forward to the soccer field that is to come. We just had the groundbreaking today, I think, earlier today, the groundbreaking for Unity Square Park's soccer field. So very excited. Have a good evening.
So Mr. Garcia, contrary to what I just said, I'm going to change that around again, real quick. Counsel, before we continue with our civic comment in light of everyone that is here tonight with us and the fact that we want to carry on with the business of the city, I'd like us to move to go ahead and vote on Resolution 24-256. Mr. Garcia, if you could, if you could read, wait, is this the right?
Certainly.
No, it's not the right one.
24-256, Unity Park.
Yeah, it's 24-256.
That's correct.
I have something about lights. Unity Park, the light, okay.
That's it, correct? Understood. Madam President, I'll go ahead and read that title. And then after I read that title, if you want to ask for a motion to approve. That is Resolution 24-256. Resolution authorizing contract to Musco Lighting LLC for the purchase and installation of two 60 by 1, 60-inch by 120, 60-foot by 120-foot mini pitch systems, one each for Unity Square Park on Hamilton and Chestnut Avenue and Cooper Field on Union Street in the city of Trenton, Department of Recreation, Natural Resources and Culture awarded through Sourcewell Contract, RFP number 041123-MSL, formerly National Power Alliance and JPA, in an amount not to exceed $280,000. This contract shall be awarded for a period of one year from the date of award. Madam President, if you'd like to ask for a motion to approve.
Madam, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. That was moved by?
Frisbee.
Second by the VP. Thank you. Going through roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
One second.
Is there discussion?
Yeah, yes.
Go right ahead.
I would like to ask for the Director of Natural Resources to come to the.
I'm gonna, yes.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I appreciate that.
You want that before we do this?
Yes, I do, because I'd like to know, yes.
Okay, one second before the vote. I'm sorry. Thank you. Director Richardson?
Council President Maria Richardson, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Reason I ask for, a lot of charges were made tonight regarding this park. So I'd like to, if you could give us highlights in a little detail, what exactly this ordinance will, this resolution will do for that park, as promised, particularly the mini pitch system.
Yes. Council President, may I get your permission to address you in English and then in Spanish?
Yes, so here's what I would like, so that way we can expedite this and move it along. I, I was going to ask questions as well. As you answer the councilwoman's questions, please be specific in your conversation about the soccer field, what was promised, what is happening with the soccer field, a timeline so that everybody is very clear on what it is that is going to take place at Unity Square Park.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am not sure about what was promised, right? I have not promised anything to anybody. And as I say that, I really would like us, me as an administrator, as a city representative, but also as a citizen of the city to be responsible, right? I would not like to come to this forum or any other and misrepresent anything, right? So one of my responsibilities as a cities, as a citizen, is educate the community. So if I said to you that a capital project is taking three years, please congratulate me because it is awesome to develop a capital project in three years. Usually, a capital project takes five years from the time that you think about it to the time that you complete it. And I'm going to say that in Spanish. I didn't, yo no le prometía a nadie nada en este tiempo, ¿verdad? Y como ciudadana y como representante de la ciudad, yo tengo que decir que uno tiene que ser responsable cuando uno se presenta a un foro de este tipo o de cualquier otro. Una de nuestras responsabilidades es educar a la comunidad. Y si estamos hablando de un proyecto capital como es un campo de fútbol, nosotros tenemos que pensar en cinco años, no en tres. So if nosotros estamos hablando de tres años, debemos congratular a quien sea que lo esté planeando. Porque desde el momento en que uno lo piensa hasta el momento en que lo completa, debe haber por lo menos cinco años, ¿verdad? So el hecho de que estamos hablando de tres años es un buen tiempo. Con respecto, the timing and what we are doing there, well, I need to go back a little bit. I know that Council Harrison has been working tirelessly with Jose Cabrera in that field because he has been contacting me every time that he speaks with Jose Cabrera. And Jose Cabrera just expressed it here, right? So yo sé que el consejero Harrison ha estado trabajando con Jose Cabrera durante mucho tiempo porque cada vez que él se comunica con Jose, y Jose lo explicó aquí, el consejero se comunica conmigo y trata de acomodar las cosas que Jose necesita. We have been working with Jose for several years now, including to the designing, the conception of what is going to be the mini pitch that we are talking about today and about the soccer field. So let's please not use this forum to create problems because there is no problem there. And we understand that the community has needs there and we have been trying to address those needs. However, I do not do, my department doesn't do projects based on, I want to have a soccer field, right? In 2018, we implemented a study. We implemented a full diagnostic of recreation facilities in the city of Trenton. And with that diagnostic, we made decisions of which park we work first, which facilities we work first. En el departamento de recreación, en el año 2018, hizo un diagnóstico de nuestras facilidades deportivas y parques y determinamos en qué orden íbamos a realizar las actividades y las renovaciones y mejoras que hacemos en los parques. Esto no es emocional, ni es porque yo decida que vamos a hacer un campo de fútbol. Es basado en ese diagnóstico y en las necesidades de la comunidad. In reference to Councilwoman Williams' question, what we are going to be doing, and we announced it today, although that was not part of our groundbreaking ceremony that we have at Unity Park this afternoon, we are going to be doing a, installing mini pitches in Unity Park and also Cooper Field. The timing, we decided that we were going to do the mini pitch first after a conversation with my architect, Councilman Harrison, and Jose at the park, and everybody is privy to it. But we decided that we will do the mini pitch first to allow him to complete the season. When we complete the mini pitch, then in September or beginning of October, we will work on the soccer field. But please remember that that was, until three years ago or four years ago, that was a baseball field with an active league. And we made a decision after sitting down with Jose that we will allow him and his group of kids to utilize the field only for soccer. So this is a process that we have been talking to him and trying to accommodate the needs of that group. And now, wow, I need to say that in Spanish now. Nosotros hemos estado trabajando con Jose, por lo menos por los últimos cuatro años. Quiero recordarles que ese campo era un campo de béisbol y decidimos permitirle a él utilizar el campo por la cantidad de niños que tenía. Pero hasta ahora hemos estado trabajando con él y precisamente por una, porque él nos lo pidió, decidimos instalar primero el footso, la corte de footso, en lugar de construir el campo de fútbol para permitirle que termine su, la temporada de fútbol. Any other questions? Thank you, my pleasure.
Any other council people have any questions for Director Richardson?
Council President.
Councilman Harrison. I mean, Ms. Richardson?
Director.
Directors, please.
So sorry.
Regarding the previous batting cage, which now is a soccer complex, that building, you upgraded the bathrooms, right?
Yes, and it happens that when we met, thank you for mentioning that, when we met probably two or three weeks ago with Jose Cabrera at the park, I asked him if there was a need for additional work at the, with the bathroom facilities. And he said, "No, everything is working well." So yes, we, we made the batting cage available for indoor soccer and did whatever Jose asked us to do there. I, I need to commend him. Jose does incredible work working those facilities. But yes, he acknowledged at that time that the bathrooms were working well. So I am surprised to hear that there are no bathroom facilities there available for the children.
Also, the, the air conditioning in that building now, and the fan is working?
Oh, yes. We actually, during the winter, to accommodate the children there, we work on the AC, excuse me, the HVAC and air conditioner. That's correct. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? I just have one quick question for you.
Sure.
With regard to the upgrade to the bathroom and then the air conditioner unit working, does your staff go out regularly to inspect, like those areas, like the bathrooms and stuff, to make sure that everything is, is as it should be?
Yes, actually, the staff, we have people who go to the.
So we would like to have order in the room. I would politely and respectfully ask, I've been patient, thinking that things would kind of calm itself down, pero necesito silencio in the chambers, por favor, so that we can conduct the business of the city. So please, with the, with the noise, yo comprendo que están los niños en la área, pero necesito que es silencio so that we could do the work of the city. Maria, I'm Director.
Yes, we, we have actually staff that goes to the park every day, but not just that. Jose Cabrera has my number. He has the number of my staff. And when he needs anything, he makes a phone call.
Okay. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Can we go back to the vote now? Mr. Garcia?
If there's no further discussion, I'll start with the roll call once again. There was a motion in second calling the role, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Kettnerberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Not because it's a racial thing or a favoritism thing, but because it's the right thing for all of our children, I vote yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
I concur with Councilwoman Frisbee in her comments, not because of race or anything else, but because it is right for the children, yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We're going back to civic comment now?
Certainly.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
So I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. And I love the fact that we have so many children in the room. I would, I would implore everyone, when we need something, that we come to us. But when you come to us, come the way you want us to come to you, and that's peacefully. The children are going to respond accordingly. And we give you our peace. We've been in the seats now for a year and a half. We cannot undo what was done three years ago or seven years ago. But we are working really hard with our administration. And we ask that you work with us also. Our children are our future. Everything that we do is about and for our children. Nothing that we're doing up here is to hinder them. So everything that you hear from us, please let, please be assured, it is about the children. It is not about gender. It is not about race. It is about doing that which is right for all of Trenton. And as we get the funding and as things are made available to us, we are doing the best with what we have. We're making sure that everybody is. We're making sure that everybody is held accountable. And Director Richardson, I thank you for the work that you've been doing. You have been doing a phenomenal job, and I want to thank you for that. Councilman Harrison, he's been here longer than all the rest of us. And he has helped us, and I know that he's helped you guys. He's helped every, he hasn't even just helped his own ward. He's helped my ward. He helps every ward, every section of the city of Trenton. So, when we come, we ask that you give what you want to receive back. If you want our attention, if you want our peace, give that. And then show our children that that's how you come in and that's what you get back in return. Our community, you don't even know our backgrounds. You don't know which of us has a Latina, you don't know which one of us has the Cubano or a Muslim or whatever, but we are one. It's not about who is who. We are all one people, and that's how we have to address this community and keep it that way. Otherwise, we are teaching each other and we're teaching our children to divide, and we're not to be divided. Even though we have all these different wards, we are one city. Many faces, one city. Many genders, two genders, one city. Many different languages, but still, we are one city. When people say Trenton, they see you, they see me, they see each and every single last one of us. So, I tell you, this council, I can't speak for the previous council, but this council wants what's best for our community, and that includes your hijas and your niños, because yours are ours as well. That's what I want to make sure everyone in here knows before you leave here on today. With the next, with the next thing. For those of you who have children or family members who are differently abled, I'm a mother of a special needs child who's differently abled. I'm working with Councilwoman Gonzalez. We are having a special needs day. We're calling it 609 Day this Friday in the Capital Area YMCA, 471 Park, Pennington Avenue. No, 47, that is the wrong address, but the YMCA, Capital Area YMCA on Pennington Avenue. We're having a special needs day. We would love to have your children, your families come out and join us. We don't do a whole lot for those who are differently abled, but we are trying. We're trying to make sure that everything that this city needs, that other cities may have, we make sure that we're bringing it here. So, on this Friday, we invite you to come out from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock. Special Olympics will be there to join us, and we want all of you to come out as well. And the, excuse me? It's this Friday, this Friday from 6 to 8 o'clock at the Capital Area YMCA on Pennington Avenue. Please come out. There'll be food, fun, just a good time. And that's including for our seniors as well. In regards to Resolution 24-02, 042, the cannabis. Can I 100% agree? We cannot discriminate in any way, and that even includes cannabis. Everybody might not have the resources. So, we have to go back to the drawing board and make sure that we are inclusive again for everyone. What affects one of us affects all of us. And again, we don't want anybody being unfairly or because they don't have the advantages some of the others of us to be incarcerated because they need it and they don't have the medical paperwork. With that, I'm done. Everybody, thank you for coming out and have an incredible evening.
Council, thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Council President. Ghetto, prime, dice gracias a todos ustedes por estar aquí con nosotros, para venir, para hablar, para defender a nuestro niño y ustedes, la comunidad, y las necesidades que ustedes quieren ver. Nosotros queremos trabajar por ustedes, y yo quiero dar la gracia también a la directora Richardson porque yo sé que ella está trabajando bien duro para nosotros y para, ella siempre está hablando con ustedes. No sé qué pasó el último cuatro, cinco, seis años porque nosotros no estábamos aquí. Pero con la necesidad de que ustedes estaban diciendo, nosotros ya sabemos eso, lo que no apoyar a ustedes. Y yo sé que ella va a ser la más posible para hacer eso y con nosotros. Nosotros queremos darle esa feel también. Y como la señora Councilwoman Frisbee dijo que, no solamente porque nosotros somos latinos, tenemos un grupo de africanos también que juegan soccer y fútbol también. So, nosotros podemos hacer los equipos juntos, podemos hacer algo bien unido con esta ciudad y los diferentes grupos que juegan soccer. Just, I want to say thank you. I'm going to just say it in English. Oh, in primer, me dijeron hoy que yo no puedo traducir para ustedes en el público. No sé por qué, pero yo creo que el abogado dijo que nosotros no podemos traducir cuando alguien habla en español, so tiene que ser alguien del público que lo tiene que hacer. I just want to say thank you to everyone who came out, who spoke up, who wanted to see a change here in the city of Trenton. And I share the same sentiments as Councilwoman Frisbee. That is not just because it's Latino kids that are playing soccer, because we have a big, huge African group. We have Haitians who play soccer. And hopefully, we can build those two groups together and have a unified soccer sport here in the city of Trenton with all of the groups and all of the children who want to play soccer. I want to also thank Director Richardson, because I know she's working hard to make that happen here in the city of Trenton. And I also stated in Spanish that, you know, we don't know what happened in the past, but this is a council that does want to make change, and we do hear you. So, thank you for coming. There was something else I wanted to say, oh, about ordinance of 24-042. I also have some reservations towards this because I feel like we... Although I agree with them not allowing us to smoke marijuana or in public places such as parks and schools, but we also have to also know that there are also responsible individuals and adults who are consuming cannabis in a responsible way. And it is not fair to penalize everyone who chooses to consume cannabis responsibly. So, I share the same sentiments as Councilwoman Edwards, I'm sorry. I'm trying to read everything that I wrote too. Also, Councilwoman Frisbee just also spoke. We're going to do an event Friday, es viernes, a la YMCA in Pennington Avenue para los niños que tienen, que tienen different disabilities. Si quieren venir a jugar con nosotros, es 6 de a 8 y todo es gratis. Thank you to, oh, and also on Saturday, we're doing something in La Uclay Avenue con Councilman Harrison. Y vamos a estar dando diferentes cosas gratis para la casa, para las familiares. Si quieren venir, es a 3:01 de la Uclay Avenue. Eso empieza a la 11 hasta la 12:30. You can say the English, okay? So, I almost said it wrong. Real quick, one, si ustedes están buscando por un beca para colegio, tenemos la Trenton Puerto Rican Day Parade que está dando un beca. Tienen que ir a Facebook para registrar, para recibir un beca de scholarship. So, that's a free scholarship presented by the Trenton Puerto Rican community and friends, who, if you visit their Facebook page, you can get all of the information there. They also have the gala coming up, July 13th. As a former honoree of last year, I could say it was a beautiful event. It is to raise money to help keep our culture alive for the Puerto Rican community here in the city of Trenton. I think that's all for today. I hope that's everything. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Y gracias a todos por estar aquí con nosotros. Buenas noches. Can I just have like another 30 seconds, Council President?
Yes.
I didn't use up all of my time.
You had it.
Thank you. I had a minute left.
It was there.
So, to the ordinance 2440 with the translation. Just know that we are one step closer to making that happen. We are actually trying to draft the contract and get the quote to get in front of council and the administration. So, just know that that is coming really, really soon. So, we haven't forgotten about that, that that is coming soon. Thank you.
Councilman Harrison.
I would like to start off by mentioning, we have a Pride Month celebration. There'll be a flag raising at City Hall on the steps, June 21st, 4:00 p.m. There'll be a festival downtown, June 22nd, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. South Warren Street, between East State and Lafayette Street. Although, be a live entertainment, music, dance, food, drinks, fun and games for the children. So, please, if you're interested, there's a number you can call, 609-989-3... What is it? 3800, right. Also, there's this Saturday, the Trenton VFW 12165 honorary service. Coming together with Councilwoman Gonzalez, myself, Pastor Sean, at the Triumph Life Community Church. We're giving back from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 on the Saturday. It'll be, there's parking there, there'll be free items given away. So, if you're available, please come out. Also, tonight, I'd like to thank the administration. I'd like to thank Director Richardson for all the hard work. I'd like to thank Jose Cabrera, how, all the wonderful job you're doing out there in the community. I'm glad to see we're moving one step closer. I'm glad that the bathrooms are actually working and the building for soccer is working. So, we're getting future. We're getting one step closer. So, look, since I stand up here, I represent everybody. I don't represent the Caucasian community. I represent everybody. I help everybody all over this great city. I love this city. I don't make it about race, never had, and I never will. So, Jose, the first time I met you, I see that look in your eye. You have compassion to help kids, and we need more great people like you and in this great city. So, thank you for the work you do. Thank you, Maria Richardson. Thank you, all the directors. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you very much, Council President. With your generosity, I'd like to ask Council, Director Richardson to translate into Spanish for me, please.
As long as you stay within five minutes.
Si, señora.
That is fine.
Señora, sorry.
Councilwoman, I mean, Director Richardson.
Thank you, Council President.
Muchas gracias, señora.
De nada.
So, first thing, just a small announcement. We have, the next month, July 24th, will be the North Ward Citizens Police Advisory Council meeting. Everyone is welcome.
La consejera quiere invitarlos a todos a la próxima reunión de su comité de policía y de la ciudad. Es el día 24 de julio, y ella los invita a todos a participar.
It's at Galilee Baptist Church on Martin Luther King Boulevard at 5:30.
Es en la Iglesia Galilei en la Martin Luther King a las 5:30.
Thank you. So, the next part is very important for me to talk about because actually today, this afternoon, myself, three of my colleagues, Councilwoman Gonzalez, Council President Cristo Feliciano, Councilman Harrison, we're at Unity Park for a groundbreaking.
Por favor, podemos hacer un poquito de silencio? Es muy difícil escuchar a los padres que tienen niños llorando. Si, por favor, pueden salir al pasillo para que los demás puedan escuchar la reunión. Por favor, se lo agradecemos.
Thank you. To signify the start of renovating the park, particularly the playground for the children and the mini pitch.
La consejera quiere decir que esta parte es muy importante para ella expresar que esta tarde varios de los consejeros, incluyéndola a ella, al consejero Joseph Harrison, la consejera Jasmine Ellie Gonzalez y la presidenta del Consilio Cristo Feliciano estuvieron en el parque, en Unity Park, cuando nosotros anunciamos la ruptura de suelo, el inicio de la construcción de un nuevo playground, de un nuevo sitio para los niños jugar. Eso ocurrió esta tarde a las 12:30.
So, they could not be there, Councilwoman Edwards, Councilwoman Tesca Frisbee, Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg, Vice President, Council of Figueroa-Kettenberg were with us in spirit and heart.
Dice que aunque no pudieron estar ahí, las consejeras Jassy Edwards, la consejera Tesca Frisbee y la vicepresidenta del Consilio Jenna Figueroa-Kettenberg no pudieron estar ahí, pero estuvieron ahí en espíritu y en corazón.
I want you to know that each person on this council wants the best for you and your children.
Ella dice que cada persona en este consilio quiere lo mejor para ustedes y para sus niños.
You are wanted in our city of Trenton, no matter if you are new Trentonian or a lifelong, very old Trentonian like some of us.
Ustedes son queridos en esta ciudad de Trenton. No importa si han estado aquí mucho tiempo o si acaban de llegar.
My own children played soccer in Living Hope Church of Pastor Guzmán, where most, if not just about all of the children, spoke Spanish first.
Sus hijos jugaron fútbol en la Iglesia Esperanza Viva del pastor Julio hace unos años, y aunque prácticamente todos los niños hablaban español.
I myself coached the goalies and had to learn how to say "us sus manos."
Ella era coach de los dorados y tuvo que aprender a decir... What was the question? What you learned to say?
Use your hands, "us sus manos."
She had to learn to say, ella tuvo que aprender a decir "usa tus manos."
So, please, know that you are very, very important to each of us. As my colleague said, we all have our own backgrounds.
Por favor, entiendan que ustedes son muy importantes para cada uno de los consejeros y como dijo su colega, cada uno tiene una experiencia étnica diferente que uno, que ustedes no conocen.
And Director Richardson, her department, our mayor, Guseura, everyone wants to make Trenton better for you every single day, no questions asked.
Y el alcalde de la ciudad y la directora de recreación quiere trabajar para ustedes todos los días. No deben dudar de eso. Viva la Trenton! Que viva Trenton!
Council Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Good evening, everybody. Buenas noches a todos, los padres y los niños que oímos. We are here tonight to hear everything that you guys have to say. We understand that our children deserve ample resources. They deserve the parks. They deserve sports. They deserve playgrounds. They deserve safe space, espacio seguridad. We are here. We understand that. And please, entiendo eso, that there are 26 parks that received monies this year through our ARPA funds to rehabilitate the parks throughout Trenton. Trenton is diverse. Trenton no es the population of African Americans solamente, the population of white people solamente, the population of Latinos solamente. La ciudad de Trenton is a population of everybody that's here. Everybody you see here, everybody you see up here on this dais. We are here to make sure that things are equal. No longer do we live in a city of Trenton where we are discriminatory against any race or creed or nationality or sex. We are here to do the work for everybody in this city, regardless of even immigration status. That is not what we're here for. We're here to serve everybody in this city. And that's what we come to do week after week, month after month, for our kids. And I thank you all for being here tonight, for being present, for listening to what we have to say and for making your children a part of the civic process. This is what it's about. Your children are in the schools, I see you. Your children are in the schools and your children are learning English and Spanish to help in your own families, in your own homes, to lessen the gap of our divide. We don't want to be a divisive city. We are here to work together. We're here to do the work together, and we are here to equally accommodate one another. So, again, thank you all for being here. It's very, very important, and it is acknowledged. We are all up here, working so hard for this city. It's not just parks and recreation. It's not just about the schools. It's about quality life overall. You know, we're getting our streets paved. We're getting our parking taken under hand. We're getting our street sweeping handled. We are getting our houses demolished. We are maintaining for a better Trenton. And we're doing it all for you guys that are here in the city, that are paying taxes and are asking us questions and are showing up. So, we thank you all for that. So, I want to thank everybody who spoke tonight on behalf. I want to thank the Recreation Department, specifically Director Richardson, for getting these things underway and for making sure that these parks are rehabilitated. We want this for our children. We want your kids to go and be able to play soccer or play on the playground or play basketball, play baseball, or what have you. So, we're not discriminating what park, what area, where in Trenton. That's what we're doing to work. So we're not discriminating what park, what area, where in Trenton. That's what we're doing to work. So again, we're not race baiting. This is not about race. This is not about race whatsoever. This is not one against the other. We are trying to do this together collaboratively. And I'm really happy for the soccer program at Unity Square Park. You guys have done an amazing job. Mr. Cabrera, thank you so much. You've been doing wonderful. I sponsored Play Soccer a few years ago with Corinne Garcia, with Elma. You know, we're very, very proud of everything you've done. And as you can see with this full house, you're doing a wonderful job. Gracias a ti, gracias a Dios. With regards to the resolution for translation services, I believe we just passed the resolution of support. I'm very thankful for that. And as Councilwoman Gonzalez said, we will be looking forward to an ordinance, so that has not got lost in translation. And I also wanted to speak to 24042. I do believe that since there is Surgeon General's warnings for cigarette smoke, I think that we need to be kind of holding the same standard when it comes to marijuana smoke. And I would personally like to have proposed spaces where marijuana smoke is okay, since it is legalized. And that's the conversation that I would like to have. Other than that, it's been a long night. I want to thank you all again for being here, and have a wonderful evening. Please get home safe, and if we don't see you again, enjoy your summer. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you for being here. Thank you for speaking up and speaking out for what you believe in. I do want to just quickly echo briefly the sentiments of my council colleagues, and I just want to say what I've said from the beginning. We are here for everyone, para toda la gente en la ciudad, estamos trabajando cada día para la gente en la ciudad. Irregardless of color, irregardless of gender, sex, we don't care. You are Trenton, you are us. Estamos familia. That is what it is. And we do care about the children, let us be clear, all children in the city. I do want to say this. It was said that Ms. Moore brought up the part about Unity Square Park being forgotten about and being overlooked. We have 26 parks, well, the mayor has said that there are 26 parks that he is going to be refurbishing and redoing with wonderful play facilities for the children. So that is throughout the entire city of Trenton. So Unity Square Park is one of those areas, and you heard tonight, we have passed the resolution for them to start with the mini pitches and everything. And you've heard what the director said about the soccer. So renovation is on the way. We're not forgetting about anyone. Sometimes things just take time. I also want to say, I want to address Ms. Rodan, who spoke about the schools and what's happening in the schools. So, I am a teacher at Trenton Central High School. Yo estoy en maestra en la escuela secundaria con los niños. I did not hear anything about the stabbing, but I will look into and ask the question. While I do agree that there are issues that are happening in the high school between the various children and everything, and things need to be done, there are only certain things that City Council can do, and regulating the school district and what they do is not one of them. So while we do have a City Council liaison that goes and sits and listens to the meetings to kind of feel out what is going on, we have no control over what the school district does. That is handled by the school board, so you would have to take that. Unfortunately, to Superintendent James Earl and the school board people who are there to oversee what's happening, or to work with him to make sure that they're doing what needs to be done. As a teacher, I'm stressed out too. As a teacher, we need help too, right? We are affected by the fights and certain things and treatments that we experience by some of the students there as well. So I understand exactly where you're coming from and your concerns. For Mr. Wolski, thank you for bringing that up. I'm going to, when it comes time, ask that we pull this ordinance until we can figure out what it is that needs to be done, so we can flush that out. So there's that. To Captain Deacon, I do want to address your concerns about dealing with housing and economic development. So, we have a new HED Director, Masiel Ferreira. I am not sure what the response time is, although I have gotten several calls about people needing answers to certain things. But the business administrator is sitting here along with the Chief of Staff. If there is an issue and you are not getting a timely response to something, I'm sure one of them can have a conversation to find out what the holdup is. So I would recommend that you either see the Director, Masiel Ferreira, who is the HED Director, and if not, there is no satisfaction there, you talk to Business Administrator Adam Cruz, or you talk to Chief of Staff Jim Beach, and they should be able to help you with that issue. When it comes to Ms. Padella, if she's still here with the pharmacy, I understand that. About the parking and the passes, I'll be asking the parking enforcement, talking to Director Richardson, and seeing possibly her or Director Wilson, what we can do about temporary parking permits or something. I'm not sure how that works over there, but we will look and have a conversation to see if something can be done to accommodate the people that are there. This Saturday, at Christina Sykes Academy, Bruce Boyd is hosting the Capital City Rowing League's very first indoor regatta here in the city of Trenton, 10:00 AM at Christina Sykes, 1550 Stiverson Avenue in Trenton, highlighting Jefferson Village Charter School, Christina Sykes, Joyce Kilmer PNRA, and Parker School. So we encourage everybody to come out there and participate in that. With that being said, thank you for everybody coming out tonight. Okay, let me finish what it is that I want to say. Thank you. Thank you for everyone coming out. Uno momento, no. No, what you was talking. Okay, so here's where we are. I'm not finished. Give me one moment, please, and then we can address what it is that you have to say. I would ask that the same courtesy that I extend to everyone when they're talking, I get the same courtesy in return, so that I can finish my thoughts as well. Thank you for everyone coming out here tonight. I appreciate your time, I appreciate your passion, and we appreciate you. God bless, have a good night. Thank you. So we're gonna take a three-minute breather to let everybody clear out, and then we'll finish the business of the city. Thank you.
Well, let them all clear out.
It's a natural effect and occurrence, apparently.
Organic.
But then again, this is also what happens when we keep everyone captive, so there's that.
Madam President, we can continue on your call. I believe it's been three minutes.
Council, if we could reassemble, please, so we could continue. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Before we continue, BA Cruz has something he would like to address, Council, regarding.
Yes. Good evening, Council. Thank you, Madam President. Adam Cruz, Business Administrator. Madam President, just for the purpose of clearing the record, one of the speakers that came with the group actually made some statements that we feel need to be addressed by the police director, just to clear the record.
Thank you.
So the director is gonna come and say a few words.
Okay.
Thank you. This is regarding the high school and
Right.
An alleged attack.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Steve Wilson, Police Director. What the lady said was inaccurate. There was no stabbing in Trenton High School. The incident was reported as a stabbing. It was off grounds after school dismissal. It was thought to be a stabbing. It was not. It was a fistfight designated as a simple assault. We are still awaiting cooperation from the parents, so that we may pursue charges against the assailant. There was no stabbing in Trenton Central High School. And recently, this month, we did have two knife issues, and kids brought knives to school, and they were, the knives were taken away from them, and they were charged accordingly. But that's for the record. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Wilson. Appreciate that. Thank you, BA Cruz. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. Madam President, moving on with the docket at this time, I believe we are at the point of, well, you will have minutes for approval for Thursday. Communications and petitions will vote on Thursday as well. Reports, there will be none. Ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Madam President, if you want me to read those aloud, or if you'd like to ask the council if they have any questions regarding same.
For the ordinances for second reading?
Yes.
Okay.
You'll vote on those on Thursday, so. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Council, are there any questions regarding ordinance 24043 or 24044?
None, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Continue.
Certainly, moving right along. Madam President, moving at the point of resolutions, are there any items that the council wishes to address, directors have questions, or to extract from a potential consent agenda?
So, Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
For all of the appointments, 24241, 242, 243, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, I'd like to have them all roll called?
Certainly.
Only because they're appointments?
Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
We did not receive any resumes for any of the appointments, but I am curious if there would be attending the meeting on Thursday?
Our office was not provided with any resumes for same.
So, to that point, Councilwoman, I did ask, so Council Vice President actually brought that point forward about not receiving anything. These are mayor's appointments to these positions. And so I kind of was like, oh. But then I did make the ask for the resumes, for the resumes or the applications, if they submitted any for these appointments, and have not received anything. So what we can do is, if you'd like to wait on it, we can just pull these.
As much as I would not like us to lose time, I think it's appropriate that we wait on these until we get copies of resumes.
Okay. So then, would you like to make a motion to table them?
Well, may I ask, would it be possible to receive the copies of the resumes by Thursday? So I'd rather avoid tabling, but I am willing to do it. Yes, ma'am.
Jim Beach, Chief of Staff. Yes, that would be able, we'd be able to do that.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Council President, I have one more question too. Mr. Beach, I know that we have these, and we had some backups. Are the backups, did we fill all of the backup positions, or?
We have one vacancy remaining for an alternate. So we have a full complement of regular members, two landlords, three homeowners, and two tenants. That complements seven. We have one alternate filled, and there's a second alternate position that remains open.
For a tenant, or for a homeowner, for a landlord, I mean?
I think it can be either one.
Okay. Because I received the resume, and I think I forwarded it to you. I'm not sure if that person was considered for an alternate, the young lady who spoke here at Council. Okay, thank you. I'll send you the name too, just in case, or, did I submit to, I don't know, it was a while ago, but she spoke here. I think she sent us a resume, and I forwarded it right to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So we would like to have the resumes of everyone by Thursday, so we can review it by Thursday.
Council President?
Yes.
I also have a comment on these as well.
Okay.
I know that we all said in the past, or many of us agreed, that people that are being presented to be appointed to boards should come forward to Council to present themselves, to put a face to the name, and to introduce themselves and why they want to be on the board. I think that the public deserves to know, just for transparency purposes, and for us to know who are on the boards that we'll be working with as well.
Okay. So then, in that case, with the fact that we're gonna be waiting, so tomorrow is a holiday. So that's, let's take that into consideration. Tomorrow is the holiday. And Thursday is the meeting. I would make a motion that we table this until the July meeting. And at that time, we would have the resumes in hand for us to review it, and then we could arrange for the people to come forward. They are the mayor's appointees, so someone from his office would have to make contact to arrange for them to come forward before us at that July meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved.
It's been moved by the President, second by Williams. Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Is there, I'm sorry, table till July, correct? July meeting?
Till the July meeting.
Motion carried. Resolutions, resolution numbers, 24-241 through 24-248 are tabled till the July meeting.
Yes.
If I may, then should I prepare the candidates to also be present at that July meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, counsel, do any members have any questions regarding any of the resolutions before us that we would pull to the side from consent agenda?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
I have questions on 24255.
24255?
Yes, ma'am. 24258?
24258?
24260.
24260. Thank you. Any other council people with questions? Okay. We'll start with 24255, please, Director Richardson.
Good evening, Director.
Excuse me. That resolution is to apply and accept if it's awarded a grant from, how is it? No, I'm sorry. 255. Oh, yes. This is for the Wire Works building. We are applying for $750,000 grant from, basically for renovation. The renovation cost, the estimated cost of that project is $14 million. We are planning to do that in phases. The first phase would be close to $7 million and that would allow us to do the stabilization process. Build, replace the roof, do some exterior work, change the windows and work in the foundation. We already have at hand, not 1.2 million dollars. And if we get this $750,000, probably we'll be able to work on the roof to begin the project.
I just have one question. Thank you very much for going into detail. So this is, when we say the Wire Works, this is the very single building where the wire rope for the Brooklyn Bridge and the Golden Gate Bridge that hangs those bridges today, this is the actual building where that was created?
This is the building where, yes, that's correct. And this is the building that is housing the circus squad at this time.
Okay, and also where Art All Night was at before?
Yes, correct.
The Freedom Skate.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we add it to consent agenda, counsel?
Please do, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Director. Next, we have for Public Works, 24258. We have questions on 24258. If someone will come forward.
Just a small, itty-bitty question.
Hello, Counsel. This is Hector, Assistant Director of Public Works, representing Director Wani.
Thank you very much, Mr. Way. Reason I'm asking you to come up is, I see as listed Prospect Street and Liberty Street. It's great that that's happening for those streets, but also Memorial Drive, which I know portion of that, I believe, does come under jurisdiction of the state of New Jersey potentially. So how much of the Memorial Drive will this be reconstructing for us?
Well, for Memorial Drive, that would be the section of the street after the rim. The rim is for the state and then right after the rim where you have the light moving towards the Department of Labor. That will be done by Public Works.
Okay, as you go away from the War Memorial?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. This can go back on the agenda, ma'am.
She has another question for you on 24260. So 24258 stays on consent agenda, Mr. Garcia? Counselwoman?
Certainly.
Thank you.
And so regarding 24260, I'm very pleased to see this. I know some members of the public may wonder why it's necessary, but given some incidences that occurred in the first year and a half or so, some of us on council have had with, unfortunately, in our roles of council, we were members of the public. Why is having three baggage scanners important for us to have at City Hall and at the police headquarters?
Counsel, so over the times, there have been incidents in the city where residents have just walked through the city. Properly, our daily residents have always been a problem in the City Hall. The limitations, places they have to go. Sometimes they have to go to the second floor, third floor. They ask security. They go on the first floor, in the second, they're on the third floor. But that is now the problem. There might be a time that people might enter with firearms. The security that we have here at the City Hall, they do not carry firearms. They are not equipped as much as the police. So we try to make everything smooth as much as possible to scan all bags and all individuals entering the City Hall like we do at a police station. So the three, the equipment will be for the front and the back of the City Hall, and the one at the police station will be replaced as well.
Okay, and then the one at the front of City Hall, would that require any redesigning of the entryway from the parking lot?
Yes, so we had a contractor come here today, well, not the parking lot, but the existing security boot will be redesigned. The parking lot will remain as it is, but the baggage scanner itself will be placed at the central entrance of this central door. So we have three doors there, so the central door will be used. So it's going to take off the space of the present security boot that we have. So that boot will be redesigned.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. That could be back on consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Council President?
Yes.
I also have a question on that same one.
Oh, I'm sorry, come back.
Sorry about that. In relation to this, I would like to know where the administration stands is on having metal detectors as well, not just a baggage search machine, but to search the person directly.
I think it's going to be the combination of both. So they're going to have the metal detector itself that you walk through and then the baggage scanner is going to be there. So this is the combination of both. Like you go to the police station, you have to go through the metal detector and you have to put your bag through the scanner itself. So that's why we get just identical or replica of what you see at the police station is the same thing that's going to be here. So it's both.
Oh, thank you. I didn't realize they were dual machines.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's excellent.
All right, thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Harrison?
Regarding that, previous years, we used to have metal detectors and a wand, but that was years ago. But this is a wonderful, wonderful idea and it's well needed nowadays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else have questions for Mr. Way before we let him go back? Okay, go now. Thank you. Thank you. So we can leave that on consent, right? So we're good. Okay. I just have a quick question. I don't want it removed, but it's for Director Wilson. About 24250, I love seeing it on here, about the psychologist screening provider for the people. So is this new?
No, this is actually something that we do every year.
Okay.
When out for bid, and it's for the psychological testing for our candidates and for police officers who go out on stress to return to duty.
Okay, so that was my piece of it, right? The part about the stress to return to duty? Because, you know, as we were discussing about mental health and about doing those check-ins and what is required when it comes to our first responders being out and being subjected to so much that we have something for them to make sure that they're okay?
This is exactly that.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone have any additional questions before we move to consent agenda? Okay.
Madam President, prior to moving toward a consent agenda, I understand there are some walk-on resolutions. If you'd like me to read those titles or if you just want a motion to accept them.
So you can go ahead, please, and read the titles of the walk-ons, just so we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Certainly, to the council, the walk-on resolutions recently received by our office are Resolution Authorizing the Appropriation of $375,000 From Funds Allocated to the City of Trenton Under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 For the Purchase and Repair of an Auxiliary Location For the Trenton Animal Shelter.
Council President?
And
Oh, sorry.
One moment, I'm sorry. The second one, second resolution is Resolution Authorizing the Acquisition of Certain Real Estate Property Located at 3073 US Route 206, Columbus, New Jersey, at a cost of $350,000 for an auxiliary location for the Trenton Animal Shelter. And third and final walk-on resolution is Resolution Accepting the Lowest Responsible Bid and Awarding Contract to Seacoast Construction Incorporated for Improvements on South Warren Street and West Front Street for the City of Trenton by and through the Department of Housing and Economic Development for a period of one year from the notice to proceed and amount not to exceed $659,959.96 per bid. 24-23. Councilwoman, I apologize. I think you had a comment. Somebody had a question?
So before we move, is it improper to have Director Wilson, Director Richardson come up to explain to us about? So Director Richardson, come up and explain to us about the kennel purchase and exactly what's going on with this, please?
Thank you, Council President. Basically, as you know, we have been overcrowded at our present location for a couple of years now. The city has been spending hundreds of thousands of dollars in an alternate location out of state. So this would allow us to start moving the animals that we have in Pennsylvania to this location if you adopt this resolution. Obviously decreasing the expenditures for the City of Trenton. And the location is really close by. It's right across the street from the petting area and that we use to bring the animals. So that would be a really great opportunity for us to do that.
How will we staff this location?
We will staff with the same employees that we have at the present time. We will have some of the animals, animal attendants and laborers to move there.
So they will be there doing regular work hours?
Yes, regular work hours, just like the ones here.
And if you could just tell us the amount of savings, when we currently use the kennel, the location over in Pennsylvania, how much are those bills running us?
It's about $80,000 a month.
$8,000 a month?
Eight.
Eighty? $80,000 a month?
Yes.
And we're going to be able to pay the $350,000?
We will recover that money within four, five months.
Right, okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
You just asked my question.
Okay.
About the staffing. So we don't need additional staffing?
No, we don't.
Madam President?
Yes, Council Vice President.
Director Richardson, I know I've been speaking with Lieutenant Durlacher and they've been doing a great job with the animal shelter. It's like if you could just give a brief recap of how great they've been doing, how many dogs have been coming out versus coming in and what strides have been made with the animal shelter as of late.
Well, I don't have the numbers, but I know that they have been probably, and I have to give a lot of credit to Green, to Officer Green. She has been wonderful moving the animals. She has been hosting several adoption events and she has been absolutely green. So kudos to Green and Emmanuel. They have been great. In the last two or three weeks, they were able to adopt out about 20 animals, but then they received 17 animals in one day and 27 in another within probably the same three weeks period. So they have been doing great, adopting out, but they identified a couple of cruelty cases and, yes, we continue to be overcrowded. So this would be great to kind of resolve that issue.
Thank you, Director. And I just wanted to add that they've been extremely responsive.
Yes, yes, thank you.
At the July meeting, I'd like to have Lieutenant Durlacher and Ms. Green come and talk to us
Great, I will pass things.
About about what's going on at the shelter from their perspective, so council can ask any questions directly that they may have to them. Councilwoman Williams?
And Council President, I'm sorry. You want to do that in the July, not with the August meeting with the Health of, with the Board of Health?
Well, here's the thing, because of, no, I'd like to do it in July.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Because I want all the council members to be able to ask any questions that they would have. So we'll do them in July. Thank you. So we'll go Councilwoman Williams and then Councilman Harrison. Thank you.
I just want to say first, thank you, Council President, because I appreciate having the chance to separate animal shelter from the Health Department. I think it's important. So I just want to add, I've been very impressed with the changes that have happened and the improvements at the animal shelter. I think Lieutenant Durlacher is doing a great job. Her staff all are very highly motivated. They're very much enjoying what they're doing. They seem to love what they're doing. When I went out there for the adoption event last month, all I saw was a group of employees who want to do what's best for those dogs and try to find them good homes and forever homes. So that was, it was great to see any involvement with different sponsors and people donating food and so forth. So I just wanted to say bravo and congratulations and thank you. But I also do have a question. So since these changes have occurred and have been positive, how has, I guess, reaction been or how is the number of animals that came from suburban towns that were being left at our animal shelter, has that increased or decreased since we've had a much more motivated staff and a much more thorough staff?
That has increased. We have seen animals that have been dropped in different parks and stuff like that, that we know that they are not from Trenton. And what we are doing, we are contacting other municipalities and letting them know that we know. They are also contacting, some other municipalities are contacting our staff and trying to get our staff to go and work there, which is fine, because that always happens. But yes, they, we have seen an increase on animals coming from other towns.
Do you have an idea percentage-wise?
I really don't. I don't. I would not like to adventure with the number.
And then finally, I know you went over the numbers a little bit. Roughly purchasing this facility in Borden Town, how much will that save our city each year?
This year, probably half a million dollars.
Half a million dollars?
Yes.
You're alone. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you, Council President.
Director Richardson, regarding the animals, is there like a, I know like a wish list for donations? Yeah, I mean, do you have like a flyer, like what you need? Because like whether dog harnesses or dog bowls or whatever you need, do you have a flyer? So you can get it out in the community?
The staff has a flyer with some things that they would like to receive, like toys for the animals and that sort of things. We really don't ask people to donate money. because every time that we receive money, we need to come to City Council with the resolution to accept the money. And so if people gives us $20 donation, then I need to come to council for the $20 donation for the animal shelter. So, but you know, food for the animals, toys and that sort of things, that's the kind of blankets, because those things, we spend them regularly. And you know, when, when an animal gets used to a toy and the animal, the dog or the cat, they get adopted, we want to give the new family their toys and that sort of thing, so that the animal don't, don't suffer too much when they go to another location.
Yeah, because I have donated the dog bowls, the big dog bowls, but you guys are looking for, I think it's large harnesses for the dogs, but I'm trying to figure out which, like, which style or which?
I can get that list for you. Yeah, harnesses is, the, the dogs eat them.
Right, well, I'm thinking because.
They break them.
They're able more to control.
Yeah.
Your dog. So anything I can do to help, and my colleagues are all doing the same thing. They're always helping out.
I can give you the list.
Exactly. So I appreciate your help. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
So we'll move these on to consent agenda?
If you want a motion to move them on to consent agenda.
Okay, so.
And yes, I do understand I have to assign numbers to those.
Right, okay. So, so I'd like to have a motion to add the following to consent agenda, or to have the following as consent agenda. Resolution numbers 24249, 250, 251, 252, 253, 254, 255, 256, 257, 258, 259, 260, 261, 262, 263, 264, 265. The resolution authorizing the appropriation of $375,000 from the funds allocated to the city of Trenton under the American Rescue Plan of 2021 for the purchase and repair of an auxiliary location for the Trenton Animal Shelter. The resolution authorizing the acquisition of certain real estate property located at 3073 US Route 206, Columbus, New Jersey, at a cost of $350,000 for an auxiliary location for the Trenton Animal Shelter. And Mr. Garcia, if you could read that last one from HED?
Certainly. Just to note, Council President, Resolution 2, sorry, that's 256, was just voted on by the council this evening.
Right, I'm sorry.
So that will be taken off. The remaining ones are on the docket with the exception of the three I just read. I'll read the last one from HED, which is resolution, we've numbered that resolution 266.
Okay.
Resolution accepting, I imagine these will be 267 and 268. The numbers were not sequential, so I didn't venture off to do that yet. Again, I'll make sure that I assign those numbers. Number 24-266, resolution accepting the lowest responsible bid and awarding contract to Seacoast Construction Incorporated for improvements on South Warren Street and West Front Street for the city of Trenton by and through the Department of Housing and Economic Development for a period of one year from the notice to proceed in an amount not to exceed $659,959.96 per bid 2024-23.
Okay. So council, just so we're clear on that, everything is on consent except for 24256, because we voted on that in the beginning for Unity Square Park. So may I have a motion to approve all of the resolutions noted for consent agenda?
Some of.
Second. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettinburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Vote in, I'm sorry, Mr. Councilwoman?
You're voting to add these to the consent agenda?
Okay, yes.
That's a yes. Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. They will be added, they will be added to the consent agenda for your vote Thursday. Madam President, there's no other questions on resolutions at this time. We can move to the ordinance for first reading. Are there any questions regarding the ordinance for first reading 24-042?
Yes, I believe there are. Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, I'd like to, I know Director Bridges and our other attorney, Scott Michio, are not here to discuss this ordinance or its genesis, why it came to us. But if possible, I'd like to ask Director Wilson for his viewpoints on this cannabis ordinance change, because I've read through it. I'm not seeing where people would be jailed. However, I'd like to have an explanation, because I, you know, understand Mr. Wolfsky and my colleagues' perspectives on it, but I'd like to try to find out from them, what is the deal here?
Thank you, Council. Steve Wilson, Police Director. First, there's no incarceration attached to this ordinance. It would just be a fine. And what you have to do is think of this as akin to the drinking in public ordinance, not this tobacco smoking statute from the state. And as far as responsible drinkers, you drink at home or you're responsible when you're drinking out in a bar, but you don't drink in public, you don't drink while you're driving. This ordinance is akin to that, because although recreational marijuana is now legal, it's still an intoxicant, and that was the idea. It wasn't related to smoke and like smoke, with cigarette smoke and tobac, and marijuana smoke. It's just that, it just so happens that this type of marijuana consumption is, you know, similar to smoking a cigarette, but the ordinance itself is akin to the drinking in public ordinance. And so there, there is no incarceration. It'd only be a fine attached to that. And I just got to say, with the, most of the community meetings I go to, it has been brought up because folks are on the streets of Trenton and they're driving, and there's people smoking in their cars. And just think of, you don't want nobody drinking in their car, and it's the same thing, because there are responsible marijuana smokers, and a responsible marijuana smoker would, would be smoking at home or inside a place that is legal to do so. And, and then not smoking to the point where they're so intoxicated they can't drive home. So that's, that's where this ordinance is being brought forth before council for approval. Any questions?
Council President?
Councilwoman Frisbee?
So thank you, Director Wilson. Is there, first of all, what, is there a limit on the number of fines that any one individual could receive? That's my first question.
I'm, I'm not sure. That would, I think that would be based on what the, the fees and fines in our city ordinance are now. I think if it's equivalent to our drinking in public ordinance, that that would increase if you found, you know, multiple times guilty of that ordinance violation.
So then that leads to my next question. With repeat offenders, is there a different penalty other than the fines if they just say, I'll pay the fine and keep on, and we keep catching them?
Well, if you don't pay a fine, that'd probably generate a warrant for, for arrest for failure to pay. And in which case, with the current bail reform, probably wouldn't get locked up unless that failure to pay went over $550.
Okay, and so I appreciate you expounding upon that, because I didn't, in my mind, automatically would find in cannabis, I automatically think incarceration, which is exactly what we're trying to get away from. So thank you for the clarification on that. There was one other question, and I didn't write it down, so I can't think of it.
Okay.
But thank you. Appreciate your clarification.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Edwards?
Thank you. I just wanted to touch on that note that though this is intent, intended to be fined, as you said and alluded to, it would lead to a warrant for your arrest if you failed to pay, say a person cannot afford to, they will be issued a warrant, then arrested, then incarcerated, or?
Well, you automatically don't get issued warrants. Normally, the courts would send you a second notice to pay your fine, maybe even a third notice to pay your fine. And basically, you shouldn't be violating our city ordinances when you can't pay the fine. So you have to have some type of citizen responsibility here.
Right. So the, the whole purpose of the decriminalization of cannabis and legalization of medical and adult use is to get away from punitive punishments and punitive reactions. And thus cannabis should be treated equally to tobacco products. And I believe, as well as millions of other across the nation, that it should follow the same circumstances that are permissible as a tobacco product. I do understand the, the point of view from an alcohol perspective, and those laws exist for a reason, but I do not equate, and many do not equate, experts do not equate cannabis to alcohol. And they have entirely different effects on your body and on your behavior. So I would err on the side of caution. I would advise whomever drafted this to seek counsel from the attorneys to make sure that we're not superseding what the state laws are. I wish I had the NJSA statute to cite in front of me for tobacco use, but cannabis should be following the same use. And furthermore, I would recommend for the administration to seek counsel from the Cannabis Regulatory Commission on a state level to see what they have to say and what they would recommend as well before we introduce this back to our docket. Thank you.
Okay, so this was drafted by the Law Office for the city of Trenton, not by me. And also, when there was prohibition and prohibition became legal, it was to take away the punishment, but still you can't drive intoxicated, you can't drink out in public. So like, like I said, it's, if you wanted to enforce it, this is just an opinion of, and make it equivalent to tobacco products, you can barely smoke tobacco anywhere except your home. So it's, you know, it's, that is in itself restrictive as well, because you can't smoke tobacco in public parks and this and that. And what I wanted to comment before on a lot of the community meetings I go to, there is many complaints about open marijuana smoking in the city and folks driving, like I said before, driving while they're, you know, and smoking while they're driving. And so, anything else? That's basically, I think, where it is, it came from. So, any other further questions?
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you. So I remembered my other question. So cannabis, we are, if someone is sitting on a private porch, they're allowed to smoke cannabis, is that correct? As opposed to standing on a corner, at a corner store or whatever it is, then that is prohibited. I'm trying to get the clarification on that part.
Yeah, well, I, I think that's what this ordinance is all about. If you're, if you're on not public property and you're on private property, yes. But if you can't stand on the corner and smoke away, or walking down the street or driving, it's like I said, it's, should be compared to the drinking in public statute.
So thank you for that. And the other part of it is that this is a comment, and that is comparing what I've seen, which has been scary, folks actually doing, using bongs in the car. And literally, you can't see. They open up a window and whether they're, windows are open or not, there is a cloud of smoke, which is dangerous. And so that is concerning. So I appreciate this. And yes, we probably need to revamp it a little bit, but that does need to be taken into consideration. I have seen several cars that it has concerned me greatly, that you see folks, they're in there and they're smoking, some of it's marijuana, then you've got, especially when you've got two and three people sitting in the same car, and they're all doing the exact same thing. I, it concerns me that the driver, I can't imagine the impact that that has to be having on the driver, even if they're, if they're not smoking, they're still smoking.
Right.
So they're inebriated, whatever, however you want to say that way. But then also the bongs. The bongs is something that we would also, I would love to see addressed, that no one should be using a bong anywhere in public, especially in a, behind a vehicle, behind a steering wheel.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council President? Thank you. So thank you so much for coming out to speak, Director. So I've been at community meetings, you've been at my community meeting for the Northwood CPAC, and you've heard constituents complain about this, seeing people smoke with children in their car, not being able to walk through their own neighborhood, not being able to sit in a park, et cetera. So there is a balance out there between folks who want the freedom to smoke, where they're, you know, they're at their home on their porch or walking anywhere else. And there's the freedom of the people who don't want to smell it, don't want to be affected by it and so forth. And that's what we're trying to find a balance, I think. So with this, even the standpoint of, and I support tabling it for the moment, because we really do need to have Director Bridges here at the meeting to explain the genesis of this and how it, if it does or does not violate state statute and so on and so forth. But to Mr. Wolfsky's objection and what this ordinance corrects, is the idea of someone needing this for medical purposes. So if some, they were to be stopped for smoking and they indeed needed it for a medical purpose and wasn't a public space, do they prove that they need it for medical by simply showing an ID card? Or how would that occur so they do not get arrested and put into incarceration?
Well, certainly, I, I think that would be one way to do it. But if you're talking about while in a motor vehicle, now you're talking about driving while intoxicated or driving under the influence, that's a totally different thing. Because you can be drunk or high behind a wheel, you still get a DWI or a DUI. And that would include incarceration. It's, it's an arrestable offense for, for driving while intoxicated. This is, this is why, you know, this ordinance is important, because the fact that, you know, medical marijuana or marijuana was legalized, it could still be abused, just like alcohol was legalized, and it could still be abused.
Okay, so as long as they had their state ID card and presented that at the same time, or as long as they're not driving, then they would be theoretically legally to do what they were doing?
Was, as long as they're not driving intoxicated or showing signs of intoxication.
Okay. And so to one of my colleagues, I believe Councilwoman Frisbee brought it up earlier about the types of offenses. I thought it was a good question. It does say in the, in the ordinance itself, "Any person violating any of the provisions of this chapter upon conviction thereof shall be subject to a civil penalty of not less than $250 for the first offense, 500 for the second offense, and 1,000 for each subsequent offense." So at what point, say I, I do it three times and I do a four, five and six, theoretically that would be $4,000 plus the $500 plus $250, at what point does that turn into failure to pay where I would actually be incarcerated, which I personally do not want to see happen?
Well, when, when someone is given a, a fine to pay, there's a time limit on that. So I, that's something that's done in court by a judge, so I probably wouldn't be in a position to answer that.
Okay, so that's a legal judicial?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and, and I would also definitely recommend talking to Wes, Director Bridges, and further into this, if there are any legal part of this as well.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Director Wilson? So I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, and I know we're gonna ask Wes the questions and everything, so I already got that. So here's my question. Okay, so let me make a statement. I don't smoke. Okay, so let me make a statement, I don't smoke cannabis. I've tried it before, but it burnt my throat, didn't do nothing for me, I went to sleep, it was over. So how much medical marijuana? How much medical marijuana is like needed for medical purposes? Like what has to happen, like what has to happen to the person, like they're in pain or whatever, like are they smoking it to the point that they are almost intoxicated, I know what I'm, are you following what I'm trying to ask, like? How much do you have, like, are you smoking it enough to just be chill, or are you smoking it to the point that you are like almost comatose? Like, how much is, is too much, or how much is enough? Or like, how do you, how do we let these people like drive around and be doing stuff, like what is the, like what is the acceptable consumption level that a person could even be moving around or walking or driving or anything?
I'm, I'm not a medical doctor, so I don't know, but I do know that some people have a higher tolerance for intoxicants, some people have a lower intolerance for intoxicants. For instance, I'm a lightweight myself with alcohol, so one or two beers, I'm feeling kind of nice, so I don't drink. But other people can drink, drink two six packs and be walking a straight line down the hallway, no problem. So I, you know, based on my experience as law enforcement officer, that exists for any type of intoxicant. There are other prescription drugs, and it says do not drive or operate heavy equipment while dosing with those drugs. And, and you know, I know that cannabis is legal, but it's still an intoxicant. So I think that we have to gauge our decisions based on that, and because that's a public safety issue, so. And I'm not trying to take legal marijuana away from anybody, I'm not trying to, to discount those who are, have med, for medical reasons, I know that there are cancer patients that take chemo and they have no appetite, and cannabis gives them appetite to eat to fight off their disease, whatever they're, they're handling, I know that glaucoma patients, THC relieves pressures in the eyes, and you know, there's legit medical reasons for it, but still, because you have medical marijuana card, you still can't drive intoxicated, and you know, you still can't do that, even though you have a, it's a medicinal purpose. Still can be, like I said, it still can be abused.
Right. Okay, I mean, because I see it says don't smoke it on a school bus, transportation, private vehicle unless it's not in operation, school grounds, correctional facilities, park, recreational center, I mean, like basically.
Smoke at home.
Basically, it says just smoke it at home.
Yeah.
That, that's it.
And like you said, a responsible drinker will drink at home, a responsible drinker won't get intoxicated when outside the house. And you can't, you can't walk down the street drinking in public unless there's a special event in a sealed off area that, you know, and you got to get a special permit for that, and I think you all know how that works.
I think I would be curious to know, like, if, if that's prescribed to somebody, like, are there certain doses that are like even given, like you, you smoke like four a day or something every couple hours, like I don't, I don't even know how we would even like quantify this, so I'm just going to, thank you, I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we, that we tabled this until the July meeting, or we tabled this until we get answers from, from Wes Bridges, our law director, that are satisfactory to the council. Can I, can I have a second?
Second, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, moved by the President, second by?
Second by Councilwoman Williams, I think.
Okay. Thank you, Williams, I'll pull the board. Councilwoman Edwards? Or is there any discussion, any further discussion?
I believe this was pulled earlier, I didn't know it was back longer either. I don't think.
I didn't pull it, I was saying that when it's time, I'm going to ask that we pull it.
Okay, so yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So motion to table. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to table this.
Vice President Figaro Kettner. Till July meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to table this until the July meeting, that's what we're voting on, okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried, table, ordinance is tabled till July meeting.
Thank you.
We will advertise accordingly. Madam President, I believe that is all I have on the docket this time, if you want to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Yes, ma'am, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry?
There was a one for the tray.
That was a motion by Figaro Kettner, second by Williams. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned.